We're at six thirty, so let's get started. We do have a forum. Barely. Let's get moving. So, and hopefully some others will show up. Um, let's start with introductions of the planning commission. Uh, Scott looks like you're first.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Eric.
Eric Casino, District Two.
Doug.
Doug Harmon, District Two.
And Don.
Andy Hand, District One.
I'm Jim Simmons from District Three. So. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November?
Oh, sorry. This is Kevin. I'm also here.
Approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve, approve today's agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then, so we're on to looking for a motion to, for approval of the meeting minutes.
I'll pro, I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. So it's been a.
I have one comment, Jim.
Yes, go ahead, Doug.
Under item five. Down in the second to the last sentence, it says that will simply, the overall review. To, word should be simplified.
Okay. Is that in the minutes today?
I can fix that. Yep, I see it.
Okay.
And, and Jim, it looks like Kevin has his hand up.
Kevin, question? Comment?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright, so, I don't know, you forgot me, but I was there for roll call.
I, I apologize. You're absolutely right. Sometimes when I don't see your face, I don't see it there. So, Kevin, sorry.
No worries.
Would you introduce yourself right now?
Sure. Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Thank you. So we have a, a motion to approve the. A motion and a second to approve the meetings. For November third, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And so. Okay. For this public meet. Virtual meeting, Wednesday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Please, for this is a further public communications. Sorry, I'm a little scattered today. For this virtual meeting, Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, please choose to raise your hand option. If you wish to address the planning commission. If you are dialing in, press nine to raise your hand. The chair hosts will unmute you when it's your turn to speak. Make sure you also choose six to unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting. And call three six zero nine seven two six seven eight five to make your public comments. So if you. Are member of the public and would like to speak, please raise your hand now. Let me get to the right spot here. And I've not seen any raised hands. Is there anybody who would like to speak? One more opportunity. Again, not seeing any raised hands. Okay, so we're moving forward. Let's move into our work session for the A twenty-four Emergency Housing Order. Ordinance, excuse me. Looks like Maya Tippel and Leah Davis.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. I'm joined tonight with Leah Davis, Associate Planner, and Leah will be taking on the bulk of this presentation. It should be fairly short, informational only, and afterward. Happy to take the questions on this item. So Leah, I will let you. Kick it off. If you want me to share the PowerPoint, then I'm happy to do that. Just let me know.
Okay, I think it's all set up, so I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right. So today we're going to be talking about the Emergency Housing Ordinance Code Amendment that's proposed. Um, I am Leah Davis, Associate Planner with Community Planning, and as Maya mentioned, she's here tonight as well. So we're going to renew this code, or review this code amendment that the board has asked us to take a look at. This is a new item for the planning commission. Uh, this is docket item A twenty-four. On the Development Code docket, it is a board-initiated item to consider making the interim regulations for homeless encampments permanent. The board also has asked staff to investigate ways to improve the regulations. Uh, which is being done as part of this docket item. Today's work session is for information only. We are not asking for any decision at this time. Uh, we will cover the history of the homeless encampment regulations in Thurston County. Cover the history of the interim regulations and review public and department input that went into initially developing the interim regulations. The county has regulations for homeless encampments for the rural county and all three UGAs. They're all in the code. Uh, these were first adopted in two thousand and ten. Uh, the planning commission initially reviewed that language in two thousand and ten and recommended adoption. And the Board of County Commissioners also reviewed and held a hearing before adoption. The regulations for homeless encampments were adopted in part to implement changes made to the Thurston County Comp Plan. And the county's consolidated plan for housing in Thurston County. The two thousand and ten regulations were also adopted to meet requirements under state law. That require jurisdictions to include provisions for regulating homeless encampments. The purpose of the two thousand and ten regulations is to provide standards to assure homeless encampments. Can be accommodated while still complying with health and safety standards. These fall under a temporary use and are permitted for up to one hundred and eighty days. There are limits on the number of people that can be in a camp. There must be a sponsoring agency to enforce the regulations. And all schools in the affected district must be notified during the permit process. Now I'll review the history of the interim emergency housing ordinance. These interim regulations are the only amendments that have been made to the homeless encampment regulations since their adoption in two thousand and ten. The Board of Health declared a public health crisis in two thousand and eighteen. And in June two thousand and nineteen, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the interim emergency housing ordinance. This allows a waiver of specific standards by the CPED Director. These interim regulations renewed in June and December of two thousand and twenty, and in June of two thousand and twenty-one. One amendment was made to the interim regulations in December of two thousand and twenty. Uh, the interim regulations are up for renewal next month. If they are not renewed, they will expire. A bit more about the interim regulations. They also allow for the waiver of some types of regulations for homeless encampments that are not related to public health and safety. In order to waive requirements, the Board of County Commissioners must hold a public hearing every six months. And find a public health crisis still exists. Some requirements can't be waived, like sanitary portable toilets. Temporary structures needing to comply with building codes. Fire safety regulation requirements. Uh, requirement for a code of conduct and more. Examples of types of requirements that can be waived. Would be the number of residents in the camp, the length that the camp exists. Requirement of public informational meetings, onsite parking requirements, and visitor regulations. When the interim regulations were first developed in two thousand and nineteen, community planning worked with other departments to get input. Public Health and Social Services asked for revisions to consider flexibility in identification and residency requirements. And also asked to not allow waiver of sanitary requirements. That would be. That's the portable toilets and the hand washing. Ultimately, after several discussions, there was agreement to allow waiver of sanitary requirements only at the discretion. And with the approval of the Director of the Thurston County Health Officer. The County Sheriff's Department expressed concerns over the changes and how it could impact response times and staffing availability. The Board of County Commissioners requested fingerprinting be added as an optional identification technique, and that was included. Next steps for this code amendment. Thurston County Community Planning is working with Development Services, the Sheriff's Department. And Public Health and Social Services to develop alternative amendments for the permanent ordinance. That are intended to make the regulations work more fluidly. So you should expect to see this item returned to the planning commission next year. And that's everything in this presentation, and we're available for questions.
Any thoughts or questions from the group?
I, I have a question, please, Leah.
Yes.
What is a declared emergency? How do you define a declared emergency?
The Board of Health declared that, and once, now that that's been declared, and if there is a permitted homeless encampment. The Board of County Commissioners has to hold a public hearing to declare that that emergency still exists. So it's all through a public process.
No, I meant, how do you define? A declared emergency? What, what is it? What makes it up?
I apologize. I didn't understand. Um.
I, I can take that, Leah. It's, so it differs by types of public. Emergencies and public health crisis, and basically what that means is that the board has to. Uh, adopt by resolution that there is a crisis or an emergency. And they have to make findings supporting that in that resolution that adopts that. So, um, it, you know, it varies. We recently had a climate crisis emergency adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. They will, uh, address that specifically in the findings and the resolution that claims such emergency. And that's certainly something we could bring back to the planning mission. What were the findings of that initial? Public health emergency resolution. We can provide that as information to the planning commission.
So, so I understand what you're saying, that declared emergency is kind of a moving target. It could be whatever they decide they want it to be?
It is a bit of a moving target. Um, I know for the homeless crisis, they did find, uh, they had specific numbers included in that resolution originally about. Number of, um, homeless people trends in houselessness in Thurston County and also within the city jurisdictions. So, uh, yes, it is a bit of a moving target and. Emergency versus crisis, that those terms are a bit flexible. It's really at the discretion of the board. They just have to have findings to support that.
Thank you.
I have a, a question. Um. I'm hoping that maybe you can explain a little bit why we do this through zoning instead of through building code. It would. It would almost seem like this kind of thing would be more appropriately done through like Title fourteen instead of Title twenty and then the UGAs. Is there some benefit by doing it through zoning instead of building code?
I would say that the, um, placement, the location of homeless encampments. Uh, is a land use issue, and so I think it needs to be addressed through zoning. And it's also a requirement of the state that we address that through our zoning code.
Thank you.
This is Kevin. Could you tell us a little more about the fingerprinting additional? Option that was recommended and apparently adopted. I don't understand why that was needed.
Yeah. Leah, do you know any history about that? Otherwise I can jump in.
I would like you to cover that. Thank you.
So, um, in two thousand and nineteen, when we were discussing that, one of the, um. Commissioners on the board very specifically wanted fingerprinting to be included as an optional technique. Um, both Public Health and Social Services and the Sheriff's Department reiterated. That's a very expensive technique that's used. Uh, it, it's not something that's frequently used for these types of. Facilities, but there was not necessarily any harm in putting that addition in the code language, so it was ultimately included.
Thank you.
So this is Doug. Um, so this document takes care of. Basically the sighting and, and what goes on in the camps. Where do we take care of moving people out of these camps? Where is that?
Well, that would be, um, for emergency homeless encampments, that would be at the one hundred and eighty-day time limit imposed on a. An emergency homeless encampment. Unless the, the board decides that there's still a crisis and they can, they can make a decision.
Right, but we all know it's gonna, the crisis will continue. I mean, it's. These camps, but the point is, what, where do we as a county? Have programs or whatever to move people out of these camps so that they get jobs, so that they. Get off drugs, so that they get the mental health care that they need, that type of thing. Where, where would I find that to go look for?
Yeah, and initially we had plans to bring draft code language to this meeting and talk a bit. More in depth about that kind of stuff, but all of that is stuff that we intend to bring back when we have. Draft code language. So you are correct, Doug. There are. This is one tool. The emergency waiver is a single tool in the toolbox for the county to respond quickly when there's a need to. Create a homeless encampment and move people into it. However, there are a lot of other ongoing efforts. Um, some of those are addressed in the county's homeless. Coordination plan. There's some regional housing plans that address some of these, and there's a lot of. Policies that outline what the major efforts should be. And, uh, some of that is transition, transitional housing or working to get people into, um. Yeah, transit. Saying like one of the villages that Olympia has where you're required to be working while you're living in that location. And, uh, mental health services and drug response and also training. Um, different, different organizations to respond appropriately to those kinds of incidences. So there are a lot of policies that are addressing those types of things. That's not really the scope of this code amendment specifically. But when we do bring this back in early two thousand and twenty-two, we will highlight some of those other efforts that are going on. Just for the planning commission's awareness and also the public's awareness.
I guess.
You.
Go ahead, Don.
Got a quick question. You mentioned Olympia. Do they have a homeless encampment regulation?
Yes, they do, and, uh. The county's emergency waiver language, the interim emergency waiver that the county is currently. Has active in the code is based on the Olympia, the City of Olympia's language that they enacted. I believe that came back in two thousand and eighteen where they put that through. So they do have regulations. They're very similar. All three of the cities have. Regulations for homeless encampments, and they're all fairly similar. The only thing is that Thurston County also allows for an emergency waiver of certain criteria. And Olympia is the only other city within our, um, county that also does that.
The reason I ask is because having observed some of the encampments in Olympia, if they have regulations similar to ours. Uh, that's concerning.
Right, and, um. As, as Leah mentioned in the presentation, it's an option to waive certain requirements. It's not an outright waiver. So ultimately, the director makes the final call whether or not certain regulations can be waived. Um, one of those being size of an encampment, another one being the length that an encampment can exist. And, uh. There's a lot that goes into that permit process, but the option to waive those requirements is there. Thurston County is a little bit more stringent on which requirements can be waived. Uh, the City of Olympia. Outright allows for a waiver of any requirement in their regulations. Whereas Thurston County has some requirements that cannot be waived under any condition, so.
I, I think it's also important to note that probably many of the encampments we see as we drive around the area are not permitted. They spring up and it's difficult to, um. Manage them or change them or do things. So I think that we have to also be aware that some are permitted and some are not.
Leah, I think we're, we're on our, uh, this is probably our third interim EHO. Is the intent then to make this now a permanent EHO to go into code forever?
Yes, the, the plan is because every six months, staff has to take time to renew this and have a public hearing. That the board has requested that we get this into the permanent regulations. Do a little more research to see what works, what doesn't work. And, and be done with this interim, uh, every six-month renewal thing.
If this does go into a, a, a permanent status, would there still be the hundred and eighty-day renewal thing? Like would a, uh. Homeless encampment have to be reauthorized every hundred and eighty days or?
I believe, I believe that's up for discussion. I don't think that there's a state law that says that, but I think that that would be up to the Board of County Commissioners. To decide if they want to retain that limit. For an emergency situation.
And so right now the limit is a hundred and eighty days and interim language allows for a waiver of that. If, if that went through as such for permanent regulations, there would still be the hundred and eighty-day cap, but the director would have the option to waive it in a, uh, crisis as determined by the board. So.
When you, when you guys are talking about how the director can waive requirements or waive these time caps, is that at the direction of the board or is that a? Decision that he makes on his own or how's that work?
Well, at this point, it is up to the director, and there's a minor, um, amendment in this iteration that's coming before the board this month. Um, to. Put the, the, and the director has requested that they put language in there that says the director in consultation with stakeholders. Can make a decision to waive some of these requirements. So not at the discretion of the board, but at the, that, the board has said, these are the things we're willing to allow waivers to. Director, you make that decision based on a case-by-case basis.
Who would be stakeholders?
That's an excellent question.
That is an excellent question, and, um, there is a bit of implementation and process. We haven't had to implement this ordinance. Uh, we don't have any formal permitted homeless encampments in Thurston County, and. Some of you may have heard that recently there was a permit that went through, but that, that, that process has slowed a little bit, so we haven't had to implement. Either the original language or the emergency waiver at this point. And, um, part of the, the update to make these permanent regulations work a bit better is to look into. What is implementing this really? And are there things in the code that need to be clarified a bit better? So.
So there haven't been any that have been permitted, or?
No, it's never been applied, but we recently received one application for an RV. Safe parking place. But that, like, like Maya said, that's been, um, slowed a bit, that process.
Not within, not within rural Thurston County or the urban growth areas, but the City of Olympia has permitted several under their. Ordinance, so you may have heard of a few sites. In the Olympia area. Those are all, those have all been done under the City of Olympia's jurisdiction, not under the county's jurisdiction.
So with these pop-up sites, what do we do about it? What does the county do with it if we're not gonna?
Public Health and Social Services does have an effort to go clean up sites around the county. And, um, that's, that's their domain. They have someone that works on that specifically, so.
I guess I'd be curious when the, talk. I guess I'd be curious when the time came is. Is, is, do we have to count how many? Unpermitted sites there are and people actually come to implement or they just set up, you know, just kind of. I guess what, how do we regulate? I guess my question is.
I, I don't think they're very well regulated at this point. I think it depends on. E, each camp, um, what kinds of law violations there are and whose job it is to enforce that. That's not my area of expertise. Do you know more about that, Maya?
I don't, but I think when we do bring this code language back, we can certainly ask that the homeless coordinator from Public Health and Social Services be available to attend to. Answer some of these questions a little bit better. Because, uh, that person will have better information than we can give you tonight about how many types of unpermitted camps are we seeing? What is their typical response? Are there, are there triggers that, uh, warrant them to respond more quickly in cleaning up a camp? So I'll jot down these questions and we can definitely bring back that information or bring that coordinator to the next meeting while I bring this back.
I think it's, it is important that we take a look and say, how do we address unpermitted sites? I. I recall that the City of Seattle is having trouble with one right adjacent to a school. Um, unpermitted sites should have some kind of a process to, uh, to handle them.
Now that you mentioned, um, schools, Don, the, uh. I remember you saying, Leah, that the schools, any schools in the neighborhood would be notified of these sites. Do they have any say in it?
Well.
Told.
I, I would guess that that would be considered a stakeholder, a school would be. Um, and I think that. There, you know, that's up to the director and the stakeholders, and I would assume the school is. And then there's also a requirement for a public or a. It's, it's a wavable requirement, but the code does say that you must have a public information meeting. Um, so that all of the neighbors, any, anyone who has, wants to. Get information and maybe make a statement has that opportunity.
And there are limitations currently on, uh, the distance that any of these encampments can be from a school, so I believe as it's written right now, it must be at least three hundred feet from those locations. To include, uh, childcare facilities, so.
Three hundred feet isn't very far, so.
So any other comments or statements or questions that we can hopefully get these guys?
Uh, I, I guess, could you just go through the timeline one more time on when you expect the permanent EHO to come before us?
Yep, so, um, we're hoping to bring that back in, uh, the first half of two thousand and twenty-two. It'll be dependent on getting feedback from the Development Services team and also from Public Health and Social Services and the Sheriff's Department on proposed code changes. Since all three of those departments within the county are responsible for implementing and, um, you know, actively working on this. This ordinance specifically. So our goal is the first half of two thousand and twenty-two, but of course, some of those things may be out of our control and their, and their timing and ability to review itself.
Are you expecting that you will have to re-up an interim EHO in the meantime?
Yes, so we have that on the schedule and the board will be re-upping the current interim regulations with a few minor amendments. In the end of this month, actually, November thirtieth is when that hearing will occur. And then, um. There's a possibility we might have to do it again in June. It'll just depend on. How, how quickly or slowly we can get review from departments and bring this item back to planning commission.
That's all I got.
I'm listening again. Thanks, guys. For your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to number, item five, the work session for the master program. Uh, Andrew, you're up.
Great. Uh, good evening, commissioners and the focus, uh. Community planning. Uh, so tonight we'll continue review of the Shoreline Master Program. Uh, where we last left it, there are several. Options in the draft that went to public hearing and we're circling back now, and staff will be asking the planning commission for direction on. Uh, which way you'd like to see the draft go with respect to those options. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. And we'll move through the draft and take a look at some of those. And this is, work is all in support of, uh, preparing the formal recommendation that the planning commission will make. To the Board of County Commissioners on the shoreline. To the Board of County Commissioners on the shoreline master program. Okay. So I, uh, hopefully you're seeing a word document, um. Zoom in here. So I'm just going to go through, um. You know, option by option as they appear in the, in the draft and you know, there were several highlighted areas. And so we'll just move through the first one happens to be in chapter nineteen four hundred. Uh, and this relates to, uh, how we refer to, uh, non-conforming structures and uses. So we received multiple topic, multiple comments on this topic during the planning commission public hearing. And this is something that has had a lot of discussion with planning commission, uh, you know, in the months leading up to hearing. And I know that there is a lot of thought about not using the phrase non-conforming and perhaps considering another option. So there was quite a, quite a bit of public comment on this. And so, um, you know, I'm. Eager to hear what the planning commissioners would prefer to see which way you want to go. Whatever language is chosen, you know, we'll have to have a clear definition in the definitions chapter. That explains essentially what that means. Whatever we call it. It means that, you know, at the, at the current time, it does not meet the standards in the master program. You know, as they exist today, but that there are provisions for those uses and those structures to continue to be maintained. And to be modified as called out in the master program. So I'll pause there and, um, see who wants to jump in with a thought on this one.
Well, Andrew, before, before we talk about the different labels that we could use, is it actually required that? So on a existing uses, one, two, and three, do we, could we just take one out altogether? Do we actually have to make, define what it, something is considered right now? I mean, I would think that whatever the proposed project for redevelopment or maintenance or. Repair or whatever, that's when you would go through and, and figure out what's conforming and non-conforming at that time. But to preemptively call anything non-conforming, I'm not really hip on. And if we just got rid of one altogether, can we get away with that?
I, uh, it's a tricky ques- it's a complicated question. But, uh, from my research, um, what I understand is, you know, we are not tied to use of the word non-conforming. But we still do have to have standards in the program for any, any type of structure that you find in shoreline jurisdiction that does not conform. To the standards of the program. We have to have standards for how those are addressed and how they can be, you know, modified. Or anything like that. Um, if we. And yeah, the, the state has a set of standards that they say you will use these unless you've defined it in, you know, in your own code. So we, we do have some things that we do have to cover. Um, but I, but we don't have to necessarily use the phrase non-conforming, but we do want this, we do want it to be clear, you know, what. In which instances, in which structures, what uses, does this language apply? And so this would be a, um. You know, I, I don't have the entire document mocked up with, you know, how this would look with a change. Because I don't know exactly what changes you are wanting to do, but you know, it's something that I would have to take and then come back with. You know, here's what we, we took whatever your recommendation is and inserted it throughout. And here's how it, here's how it now reads.
Well, we, we know that the legislature left us the ability to call these conforming if we wanted to. Right? Lawfully established uses occurring as of the effective date of this program, which do not meet the standards of this program. Shall be considered conforming to this program. We could do that if the legislature allows that, correct?
I think so with a caveat. I think we need to have the caveat that, um. You know, and that they would be, any modifications to those are regulated as follows or something like that. I think you need to, you need to tie those two things together because what I've read in the handbook. Says that it's, you cannot simply just state that, that, you know, any existing structures are considered conforming period. You have to, it, it has to all flow and you have to have tied to those other standards. So it's ambiguous in the, the whacks themselves as to how you can use the term conforming. There is an oft quoted whack that says you can consider these structures conforming, but I think that is actually misread. Uh, in, in a variety of instances, but the handbook does say you can do this, you can call things conforming. But then, you know, you have to have accompanying standards that explain how those would be regulated and how we assure no net loss. When over time, those structures potentially are, are modified.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the opening of this being lawfully established do that well enough?
I'd have to look at it. Um, I'm not sure. I think, I don't know that we can just say they're considered conforming period. But you know, if that's something the, the majority of the planning commission wants me to look at, I can do so. Um, but again, you know, we need to decide, um, what's the terminology we're applying throughout because that's just one sentence.
Well, I, I like that if it's already been lawfully established. That it would be conforming and you know, of course, if somebody bootlegged something in or did something that was pretty egregious beforehand that they should have. But didn't that, you know, then they would get bound up by this. But if it was lawfully established before SMP. It should continue to be lawfully established.
And it, it, they are, yes, they are definitely still considered lawfully established. They were lawful when they were established. It's just a question of, and, and they're allowed to continue, they're allowed to be repaired. You know, it's just the, the master program must set standards for. We'd have to say how they're going to be managed. And this draft does say, you know, they can continue, they can be, um. Modified and expanded in, in certain ways. Um, so we can do all of that.
I just, I've been thinking through all the things that we require through the code. I don't think that these, these ones that we currently say are non-conforming are, uh. Treated differently. I mean, you can do all those things you just said, Andrew. You can, you can maintain it, you can remodel the inside footprint, you, um, you can't expand it in the buffer. Which is, we state that. So I think all of those things that. Would impact these lawfully established, um, structures are already taken care of in the code. And I agree with Eric. And I just be if it's lawfully established, it's, it's conforming.
Yeah, I think we might be saying the same thing two different ways. I, I, I'm not saying you, that we can't do that. Uh, I just want to make sure that we don't run afoul of anything, um, the state's going to require in making sure we tie this concept. That, that certain structures are considered conforming with the regulations that have to go for, you know, those conforming structures that happen to be. In the buffer. So I, if, if that is something that the, the planning mission wants me to look at, um, you know, that is. It's within our ability to, um, set the stage and essentially. Point out which, which structures or which types of existing development we want to consider. We county, um, not we, me, but, uh, the county Kent wants to consider conforming. So, um, I can take a crack at it. Um, but again, I, I'll, before I, you know, write that down. I'll also turn to the broader planning commission and see if there's other thoughts or if there's general support for that concept of, of. Consider calling it, calling them conforming. Um, and then, you know, I will bring back some language, um, with appropriate sideboards.
I, I agree. I think that they are conforming, they were conforming. It, anything that occurs in the future, they have to, uh, go ahead and, and meet the requirements that are now. But in the past, they've always been legal.
Okay. Um, Scott, Jim or Kevin, any other thoughts on that?
You know, I don't know. I just. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what to call them. Um. But yeah, I mean, anybody knows, I've since critical areas came out and I've hated the word, the use of the word non-conforming.
And I agree. I, I'm not sure the wording, but I think we're all basically on the same page about this. It's just like, how do we get rid of it in, in appropriate manner? So.
So hearing that, um, I will go ahead and, um, take a crack at it, at, uh, converting where appropriate. Making sure that that word conforming is defined appropriately and that there is an adequate walk across between. It's conforming, what does that mean then in terms of expanding, et cetera? Because this whole, this whole time, you know, it, it, no matter what you call it, there are still rules. So that's at the end of the day. So I think, um, the language is, is in some respects is, is less, you know, less impactful. Than the fact that those things are still regulated, no matter what you call them. Um, okay. Well.
Are we kind of saying that at the time of construction, they were legal?
Yes, assuming that they were. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. If you, you know, if there's someone who comes in and says, I want to expand. My structure or do something to my structure and it was not permitted, it was not legally existing, then they've got other issues to contend with before. They would be able to proceed with their project. So yeah, anything we're talking about here when it comes to a non-conforming or. You know, conforming structure, um, we're talking about something that was legally established at the time it was built. It fell all the rules that were in place when it was built. Yeah. Okay, um, if there's no further thought on that, um, I'll keep us moving here. I'm gonna scroll down. So the next option that was in the draft was for buffers on, uh, shorelines in shoreline jurisdiction. And there were essentially two options in the draft. So these reflect. How the draft has looked at different points in time. So, um, uh, the, the. Information that is not highlighted, that was sort of the default option. That was the, um, the way the draft had appeared. And then there was an option, you know, to consider buffer widths that were in a previous version of the draft, which had been larger. The, this, this section has, has changed a couple of times since, um, since the draft was first put out in two thousand and seventeen. So we, in the public comment, you know, we heard support for both options. However, uh, more support, I would think, I think there were more support for option A, even though these aren't not lettered. People, uh, were referring to these options you see here. The first one is option A. Um. So I'm curious what planning commission thinks on that. Um. And also do you want to clarify something here that regardless of the buffer that's chosen? And we talk a lot about critical areas that are within shoreline jurisdiction. Outside of shoreline jurisdiction, these buffers are not applying there. So in those areas where buffers have already been made two hundred and fifty feet with the passage of the critical areas ordinance in two thousand and twelve. My understanding is that, that outside of that two hundred foot SMP jurisdiction, that is still going to be there. So I want to just clarify that. So we're talking specifically within shoreline jurisdiction. Um, so I'll pause there and see what folks, uh, what sort of thoughts you have.
I can't see your screen. Can you tell me what the two different options are?
Yeah, um, and without reading every single line that's in here, essentially there was, um. The first option in the draft had, um, smaller buffer widths. And then the second option, um, reverted to, um, larger buffer widths in a lot of areas. So, um. And, and I think.
And you're saying there was more public support for the former?
There was more public support for the former, but again, um, it's a bit confusing because, um, in some places, um. You know, it called for the, the, the second option, which were larger buffers called for, um, like a two hundred and fifty foot buffer on lakes. While lakes today only have a fifty or a hundred foot buffer and shoreline jurisdiction is generally only two hundred feet. So it was unclear how that would be applied. Uh, and in the, for the marine shoreline, for anything but current rural shorelines, the buffer is already two hundred and fifty feet. And regardless of what it's changed to, um, in shoreline jurisdiction, you know, outside of shoreline jurisdiction, that lasts fifty feet. Would still be covered by the critical areas ordinance. But generally speaking, the first option is smaller buffers. Um, particularly, um, one we heard a lot about during the public comment period was for freshwater lakes. That are, um, shoreline residential. So currently those would be a fifty foot buffer. The first option in the draft was to retain that at fifty feet. The second option was to increase it to seventy-five. And so we had a lot of support for keeping it what it is currently at fifty feet and what the, that first version of the draft had stated.
Andrew, a couple of questions. One first is, you know, we, we're, this has jurisdiction for two hundred feet. But we're talking about rural conservancy at a hundred and fifty and natural at two hundred. So we're saying that you can't, you're not even supposed to build within. The jurisdiction of, of this document.
So the. Yeah, the first set of buffers, uh, are all reflective of the two hundred foot shoreline jurisdiction. Um, the second set of buffers, you know, do go outside of that, uh, in some areas. But again, for the marine environment, that's reflecting what's already on the ground. For anything that's conservancy or natural, the buffer is already two hundred and fifty feet today. And that's correct. It is more than the default shoreline jurisdiction. Um, however, you know, one of the things we need to show as we, when we, uh, pass this master program forward to ecology is how we are protecting. Critical areas to the same degree that they are protected today. And those buffers would do that because that's what the buffer currently is today. But the, the thing that, that I, you know, and again, I was not, and I don't, I don't want to lean on this excuse, but I was not here when this first option. Or the second option was, was, uh, talked about with planning commission. And so it's unclear to me how that, the two hundred and fifty foot for lakes would apply. Because that's not something we do today and it would be outside of shoreline jurisdiction. So that was a question that I had.
Well, I don't.
What Eric?
Well, I, I really on the, uh, SED shoreline residential at, uh, with a fifty foot buffer. I would like to retain that. I don't want to push it out to seventy-five or eighty-five feet.
Okay. Are there other thoughts on?
I agree with that. I mean, ninety-five percent of the, uh, shoreline residential is already developed. And it's already developed at fifty feet. So by going any deeper, all we're doing is, is saying there's more of them. That we would be classifying as legally established.
Do those thoughts from either of you translate further within, because fifty feet are in, it's in option A, it's in the first thing you see there on the screen. Okay. I just want to make sure, you know, so that support for that whole suite of buffer widths that are there. Or something else?
I'm, I'm in favor of what's there now, but the, another question would be, what about rivers?
So rivers are in letter E, uh, and they are two hundred and fifty feet. That's what they are today and that's what they are. They are. We didn't change that and that goes back to the biological opinion, um, for, oh gosh, I can't remember. Specific reason, but it, um, I'm beating myself up for this, but it, it has to do with why the buffers were established that way. For critical areas, uh, ordinance in two thousand and twelve, for any type one or shoreline stream, those were made two fifty back then. And there has not been, um, a proposal in this draft to, to reduce those.
Well, I for one am comfortable with option A. So if that works for every.
The, the only thing about, uh, the, the difference between option A and option B there is outside of shore, shoreline residential. And the two urban and rural conservancies, the, uh, option A is actually, uh, a wider buffer than option B. Did, so it seems like. In my mind, it's a little bit backwards. I, I would think that, that we want to maintain our, our shoreline residential fifty foot buffer. But, uh, in, in option B, rural and urban conservancy are losing twenty-five feet each respectively. What, what was the thought behind that?
So I know from my predecessor who was working on this before me, um, when. So the, uh, option A or the first thing you see there was originally what was in the draft. And, uh, he was given direction and guidance to go back and look at other buffers, um, of other. Options for buffer widths based on what other jurisdictions had done, what the science said, what ecology had adopted, et cetera. And that, this is where that came out at. And it did increase, it increased them for, for shoreline residential and for natural. It did not increase them for urban and rural conservancy. I can only assume that it was based on that analysis at the time, but I don't, I don't know for sure. Any of these, you know, buffer widths that are chosen, you know, we will need to demonstrate that we are meeting no net loss. And we'll have to point to, you know, the science that supports those buffer widths. And we'll have to point to, you know, the science that supports those buffer widths. So is that a proposal to change something within option A or?
Yeah, I would propose, as I put in the in my document that I sent it to everybody, that it'd be fifty feet for, but this is lakes now. Fifty feet for shoreline residential, a hundred feet for urban conservancy, a hundred and twenty five for rural rural conservancy and two hundred for natural. Which is a blend of option A and B.
I like Doug's numbers.
And leaving marine as option A and the streams, just leaving that alone?
I would take more, I would do the same thing with marine.
And make that. Okay, so.
Fifty, a hundred, one twenty five and two hundred.
Okay, hang on. Let me write that down. Uh, well, okay, before I write that down, um, what do other folks think about that? Is there?
I have a sort of related question. I'm not familiar with if we have any kind of specific policy around, like if I'm a planning commissioner and and I have property that would be directly affected by this particular zoning or ruling or whatnot. Is there some need for disclosure or rec- recusal or anything along those lines?
I could tell you that I talked to, and I understand that Jennifer Davis is no longer here, but I talked to her about that specific issue before. And uh her her commentary was that these are legislative changes that are not on a specific property. And that like I have another, I have a piece of property that is down in Nisqually that is affected by SMP with something that I'm not exactly happy with. And but I decided that I was not going to challenge it. I was just gonna let it go as it is because I'm a planning commissioner. I didn't, I don't want to have undue influence on that. But the uh um, you know, policy level stuff, since it affects everybody, she didn't seem to think that was a problem, especially since I don't think that there's anybody that's watched any of the planning commission meetings that doesn't know that I'm live on a lake and that Doug lives on a lake and that uh Jim is on owns a piece of property that touches the water. I don't think that there's anybody out there that wouldn't know that we do this. So if if you need a disclosure, here's my disclosure. I live on a lake.
Yeah, so I can chime in on that. Um, in in general, that is a correct statement. There are two different types of um work that the planning commission does. And um this is the legislative portion of it versus a project specific. If we were talking about a project specific, then we would be um asking for that kind of information um under the appearance here, I'm gonna try that one more time, appearance of fairness doctrine, which does govern um planning commission um a- as well as the board of county commissioners under state law. So in this situation, I don't believe.
Yeah, that was the question I was asking about. Thank you.
You're welcome. So in this case, because it is legislation, uh peer- peer-ness, hmm, really have a hard time with that word. The fairness doctrine um does not come into play. Um, although it is best for everybody to um understand where the planning commission is coming from.
And I think in addition to that, this is a really an advisory board, not a legislative body.
That is correct as well.
Okay, um, are there any additional thoughts about uh, won't call it the motion, but the proposal that is currently being discussed on buffers? And that would be to sort of have a hybrid of the two options here where um the shoreline or the shoreline residential would would remain at fifty feet. And then um for lakes and marine, uh we would use the other buffer widths in option B, which would be one hundred feet for urban conservancy, one twenty five for rural conservancy, two fifty for natural, or sorry, two hundred for natural. Did I, I'm sorry, did I, I might have butchered that. So one, one hundred for urban conservancy, one twenty five for rural conservancy, two hundred for natural. I think that gets it.
I think you said apply that to both marine and freshwater lakes.
That's what I heard from, yeah.
With those numbers.
Okay. All right, um, I will mark that down. If there's no um objection to that, I'm assuming there is a majority who is for that. Um, for seeing that in the next version of this draft. Okay, um, let me move on to the next item. Which pertains to uh uses that are allowed in the buffer and specifically decks and viewing platforms. So there is a um the draft allows for decks and viewing platforms adjacent to residential structures to be installed in the buffer with some limitations. Uh, want to clarify, this is for structures inside the buffer. It's not, it's not just on the shoreline in general. It it's structures that find themselves within the buffer. This is an allowance for a viewing platform adjacent to that house. Uh, and so that's why a size limit was originally proposed. So via planning commission discussion, there were options, including in the draft, to consider something larger or something closer than twenty five feet, um, larger than a hundred square feet in size, you know, kind of by default. Um, those were things that were originally in the draft and planning commission wanted to see public input on those pieces. And we did get quite a bit of public feedback on this um and support for potentially allowing something larger or closer. Uh, allowing them, making allowances for public access. Um, and then decide, do we want to call out or does the draft want to call out shoreline variance for those things at any level? So is there a certain amount of impact that would be authorized and then perhaps more with, you know, a variance? So maybe we can break that into pieces. Um, and I don't know if there's any, any thoughts or proposal on the size threshold or the distance threshold.
Hundred square feet is way too small. Should be like three hundred feet. Two hundred and eighty eight, which is twelve by twenty four.
Okay, and anything, um, I should also make it clear, even though it doesn't really say that here. Any of these impacts that would be authorized would require mitigation. So um, you know, this is saying that currently it's up to a hundred, great, over a hundred. You know, you need to demonstrate you're not resulting in ecological um loss of ecological function. But even something under a hundred feet would require mitigation. So I want to throw that out there. Um, uh, because, and I'm saying that because, you know, I'm also thinking about how this draft needs to justify how we are. You know, we're accommodating water dependent uses and accommodating, um, you know, residential uses of the shoreline. But we are also ensuring that we're making, you know, balancing that with mitigation that achieves that no net loss, because we we have to show that. So, okay, so I hear, I heard support for something larger up to, you know, I'll parrot Doug, twenty twelve by twenty four versus like a ten by ten. Is there other thoughts on that?
I don't have anything to add, but I like Doug's comments on that.
Okay, um, I'm looking for other folks who might want to weigh in.
This is Kevin. I don't have anything specific to that particular decision, but I keep hearing you saying that we need to be overall addressing no net loss. And we certainly heard a huge amount of public comment about that. And I hear a lot of decisions going in the direction of making things worse for us in that direction. I don't hear anything going in the direction of improving no net loss. And at some point, I'm really curious where we're going to balance things out.
Yeah, it's gonna come down to, so the cumulative impacts analysis for this document is gonna have to be rewritten. Um, there is a draft that's out there, but there have been significant changes that have been made. Um, you know, since that was originally done and um I should, you know, just because I'm saying, okay, I'm gonna make this change. Okay, I'm gonna make this change. I mean, yes, we have to, we're gonna have to justify it. And that's gonna be, you know, work that that I need to put into this. Um, and when it comes to the buffers, you know, the record is going to have to show that there is support for um the buffer widths that we choose within the scientific literature. There is a range of buffer widths supported in the literature depending on the condition of your shoreline and what you're trying to protect. And we will need to successfully tie, um, you know, the the provisions that we have put in this draft to our local circumstances and and show how they're supported by science. So yeah, it's it's not, it's not a you know, not without uh a certain degree of difficulty, but that will be the next step.
I I would like to think that that our our now proposed buffer widths are actually slightly more restrictive than they were prior. So that would be uh, you know, a positive in our no net loss calculation. And with something like this, this platform being mitigated against, that would be neutral. So I I think we're still going in the right direction.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to explain how, you know, if we're allowing a a two hundred square foot new deck. Um, well, one, one of the things that has happened in the draft um is that uh well, there's an option we're gonna get to later about whether doc- deck should be considered pervious or not, because that factors into how much mitigation you need to provide. What functions are you actually losing? Um, and perhaps part of the calculation is, you know, what type of area are you actually covering with that deck? If it's, you know, existing impervious or it's lawn or something like that, you know, there's gonna be less of an impact than if it's, say, you know, native vegetation that backs all the way up to your, to your front door.
Actually, the deck could be an improvement over grass, but one, one of the things we have to remember, and ecology told us this back in the beginning, that we need to make this easy for the public to adhere to. Uh, and currently, they're building these things now. They're not permitting them or doing anything. And and nothing will happen to them until ten years, fifteen years, whatever, down the road until somebody sells a house and somebody wants to um, do something and get a permit and and the inspector goes down and sees that, oh, you've got it. You've got a a viewing platform that you didn't get permitted. That's when they get caught. So by having this and having it reasonable in the document, it's a lot easier for people to do the right thing and actually get a permit.
So Scott, I saw you, you unmuted a couple of times.
Yeah, just to point out what Kevin was asking about. We have changed the designation on a lot of properties from rural conservancy to natural. Which not only increases the buffer, but decreases the number of things you can do on that property.
Yep, that is true, that a lot of the designations have, are proposed to change. Yeah, okay, um, so am I seeing a fair amount of support for a like a changing this instead of a hundred feet? Have it be something like twelve, twenty four? I'm just using Doug's uh suggestion for sake of conversation. Okay, I'm seeing some.
So we're saying roughly two hundred and fifty square feet.
Uh, or like two eighty eight, I think was, that was the twelve by twenty four. Um, okay, uh, okay, let me see. So if anything else needs.
Or in round numbers, three hundred.
Okay. Or three hundred. We'll do, so which, I mean, this is the time to make the sausage. Should it be twelve, twenty four? Twelve by twenty four or should it be three hundred?
I I say three hundred because I don't want to tell somebody the exact dimensions that their deck has to be.
Well, it would be a maximum, so it wouldn't be, it must be twelve by twenty four. It would be no larger than.
If like I wanted to do a thirteen by thirteen is twelve by twenty four wouldn't work or it caused a lot of confusion. So I would rather just do it by total square footage and not by a dimension.
Okay.
I, and I agree.
And I'm, then I might propose changing this to then say, rather than have it be, it's one size versus a second size with a mitigation plan, just simply clarifying that. Um, you know, regardless of what the size is, you know, this is gonna need to demonstrate no net loss. So just reiterate the mitigation piece here. Um, how about uh distance from the water? So uh, again, this, this was written in an attempt to strike a balance between allowing, allowing use of property and protecting the environment. That's why there is a distance from the water specified. Um, but you know, the the, what the planning commission took to public hearing was to have that and a different number be considered. So I'm just kind of ticking these things off one by one.
I'm in favor of being able to go right up to the shoreline. I don't think being back twenty five feet um, for ninety three percent of the the shoreline residential uh properties will make any negative impact whatsoever and may improve it.
Yeah, um, I think it may come down to then how they're showing that they are mitigating for that. You know, because it's something that's right along the shoreline and where else are they going to be enhancing function? If not in between the existing development and the water. So um, I I hear you. Um, it's certainly something we can I can look at um and see if that is gonna fly. Is there other support thoughts on that piece? So Doug is saying essentially allowing up to the ordinary high. Um, presumably, you know, any sort of um other conditions are going to control. So if there's a flood plain or something like that, you know, it's gonna control. Or if there's a wetland, the buffers are gonna control. This is saying absent other mitigating circumstances, you could get close to the water. Say, for example, up to a bulkhead that is existing on a lake.
That is concerning to me for the reasons you mentioned.
Well, and that's what I'm saying is that, uh, you know, no matter what is stated here in this specific instance, um, there are going to be other controlling provisions that protect human health and safety. So I'm just saying, assuming those other things have checked out and it's a site that would support this type of development, that's when you would be able to do this.
Would this wouldn't be better decided at the permit counter on a case by case basis when trying to determine the mitigation because of, you know, obviously something right on the shoreline is gonna be of higher value than something twenty five or fifty or a hundred feet back. Isn't that true?
Of higher value in what?
Well, I mean, if you put a a twelve by twenty four deck on the ordinary high watermark or you put one a hundred feet back, is the mitigation proposed to be the same no matter what?
Yeah, um. I'd have to look at what the mitigation options say. It's gonna depend on what you're, what you are impacting. And I don't know that that is necessarily different closer versus further away from the water. Um, I just wonder if this would run into concerns from ecology, saying it's literally right on the shoreline. And if there is any sort of runoff or anything like that, it it's you know, there's no room for error, right? There's no room to, it's it's on the water. It's in the water. Yeah.
What if we, what if we did it the same as sizing and said, you know, it shouldn't be twenty, closer than twenty five feet? Unless you can demonstrate that it will not, that it will not result in a net loss of shoreline ecological function.
That would be an option.
I like that option a lot.
Okay.
Then you'd be saying you couldn't mitigate for if if there were a loss?
Um. I think you could potentially demonstrate through mitigation. We can preserve that option. Uh, or again, I think that my hackles are going up a little bit, so I want to go back and do some digging on this one before, you know, committing to it. But I I, that's what I'm hearing Scott saying is, well, and Scott correctly from wrong. But I think preserving that option for people to say it's not gonna result in a net loss of function and one of the means of showing. It's not gonna result in a net loss of function, and one of the means of showing that is by showing how you're gonna mitigate. Okay, um. Do other folks support that, agree with that? Okay.
I do.
Thumbs up and okay, great. Uh, okay, and so the next piece here was um. Differentiating for, so, okay, and I think this probably, so this is the public access piece, and I think this came up because. Um, you know, the draft as written states, this is for decks and viewing platforms adjacent to residential structures. And there being a question of, is this something that would be appropriate for for public access um, as well? And so in other instances where maybe there isn't, there is no structure, but it's it's a, you know, a publicly or privately owned, you know, park or. Natural area or something like that and making allowance for for this type of thing as part of that public access. And now that I'm looking, and maybe that doesn't even belong in this section, but I'm curious what your thoughts are there. So it it could be a concept that we explore somewhere else rather than. And you know, because this letter B here is written specifically as addressing decks and viewing platforms for residential structures. So um, it could be something that we take outside and put somewhere else, or you could choose to address it here, or you could choose some other option. I leave it up to you.
I would think that, I mean, is there another place, Andrew, that's more pertinent, or do we just create another? Paragraph.
Yeah, there are other places in the draft that discuss public access. Um, uh. So there's public access, general public access standards here in chapter four hundred, and then there's specific standards that apply to um, new like development that's required to do public access, and that's down in six hundred. Um, so it might be the sort of thing that maybe we talk about it here about what what the planning commission's vision is for these things in the buffer. And then as I'm working on the draft, if there's other areas where it's more appropriate to address it, I could move those sentiments to that section. Um, but is there any reason? You know, planning commission would not want to see to see that allowance for public access as we are making for, you know, these residential structures.
Just thinking out loud, I would, I would think that for public access and public property that. You know, they would need this same type of viewing platform, but probably larger.
Hmm.
So I would ask the public, the planning commission to think about, these are parks or areas that uh, do not have structures. And the only reason I bring this up is because of the last jurisdiction I used to work for, we had this particular issue a lot. So to consider is that these structures could become. Please remember, I worked in Florida before this. Um, the party platforms. So uh, it is a consideration um, as you think about how big these particular platforms are, that um, they could become that as well. So there may be um, some happy medium that you all can come to.
Are you saying that they become a liability? Is that why you're talking about party platforms?
I say they be typically become, they have the potential to become a um, area where. There is a lot of public congregation and noise and um. Other things that come with public congregation.
Well, isn't that the definition of a public park and public space that? I mean, that's a regulation and a police issue, I would think. I don't think it belongs in something like this.
Just. Bringing it up for your consideration.
I'm still in favor of putting it somewhere, Andrew.
Okay.
Access.
Um. Okay, uh, is there additional? Support for that concept? Hold on. Now I can see your faces. Is there additional support for that? Okay, I, okay. All right, and then the last piece here is whether any of this should require shoreline variance. Um, and I think that's here because um, there are other places where potentially things that are allowed to happen in the buffer. They're allowed to potentially require a variance because of, you know, what's at stake here and how close you are or um, other considerations. So I I would, that's the last thing I would touch on on this issue is these, any of these uses that we're talking about. Um, you know, they are going to, if they trigger the substantial development threshold, the dollar value, they would require an SVP. Otherwise, they would not. That's a substantial development permit. Um, the question would be, though, should they require a variance?
A variance would require a hearing examiner review, wouldn't it?
Uh, it would if it was a full variance and not an administrative variance.
I I I would not want to subjugate somebody to a hearing examiner process just for a viewing platform. I think that's a little overkill.
So, okay, well then, so I would then make this a two-part question. One would be variance, which would be what you said would be hearing examiner. Two would be administrative variance, which would be staff approval, well, staff review, but ecology approval. Uh, and then the third option would be to not require any sort of variance at all.
I would, I would prefer not to have any kind of variance at all in all those, you know, the the mitigation sequence should be enough oversight.
Okay, um, do other folks agree with that?
I agree, it should just be an admin SDP.
Well, it would, okay, so, well, and thank you for that clarification. So um, yes, so uh, SDP, if it triggers the cost threshold, but but what Mr. Carmen is saying is then make that the administrative version and not the full one, which is um, hearing examiner. So um, that would be a good piece to add here, because if it doesn't, if it doesn't specify it, it's gonna be an SDP. So that's, um, okay, so that's the, what I'm hearing is support for, you know, no variance. And if an SDP is required, it would be uh. Administrative. Do other folks agree with that?
I agree, less less burden on homeowner or whatever is I'm all for.
Okay. All right, I'm writing that down. Okay. All right, and um, before I move on, um, Christian or Carmen, you mentioned earlier, you referenced comments that you had submitted. And I was remiss in not acknowledging those at the top of the work session, so I apologize for that. Um, you did send in comments, those were sent out to the planning commission and posted on our website, so everyone should have those um, for their review. Um, yeah, okay. Uh, moving on, so, okay, water oriented storage structure. Okay, we're still, we can go far, we're still in the section that's talking about uses that are allowed in shoreline buffers. Uh, and so there was an option in the draft, well, excuse me, the draft itself stated that folks were allowed to construct a water oriented storage structure to store boats like kayaks, things like that uh, within the buffer, subject to standards that are written here. Uh, and then there was an option that was floated for the public hearing draft, which was to limit that to residential uses only. Um, and so we, we did hear some support for that from the public. This wasn't something that was touched on, I don't think by a huge number of people, but there was some support for that. Um, but I will pause there and see if there are planning commission thoughts on that.
What what would be the non-residential uses of a storage structure?
Um, well, the, so the whole point is that it's a water oriented storage structure. So this, this is allowed if it's to be used for water oriented activities. And the question would just be, are we going to limit that for residential properties only or other types of ventures like commercial properties uh, or something like that?
I I guess where I'm getting, maybe you can explain to me how this situation would happen if. Say somebody's got a gooey duck farm and they have a bunch of gear for their gooey duck farm, would they not be able to store that? You know, they already have limitations on where they can store that stuff. Would they not be allowed to have a storage structure to put their rakes or their tubes or their nets or whatever they have in there? If we limited it like this?
Uh, hang on a sec. Look here, so. Oops, um, I think it's ambiguous if we're looking at how this is written. So the intent here is boats and related equipment. I mean, I think. We'd have to make the interpretation that that was included, um, because it's not clear. Um, so the aquaculture section is gonna regulate, you know, how, how and where um, activities occur in shoreline jurisdiction. Related to aquaculture operations, and maybe that's a better place to make that distinction there. Um. But yeah, I don't think it's totally clear. I think this is intended for people that want to have a small structure to put their kayaks and floats, you know, they're well. Inflatable floats, tubes, et cetera. Um, I think that was the intent. So.
Okay, I I I don't know if this is, you're, you might be right, maybe, you know, six hundred is where we put this. But if we had a, an aquaculturalist that wanted to actually store their stuff in a structure instead of just landing on the beach. It, I think we should encourage that, not discourage that.
Hmm. Yeah, and without reviewing this aquaculture section, I can't, I can't say for. Don't, don't quote me, you know, I can't say uh, exactly what it says, but um, I'm not sure they're allowed to store things on the beach. I think, I I think it's um. Yeah, I'm I'm not sure where.
Or even within the buffer, I mean, if they.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I. Stick a pin in uh, and 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 look at um. Or, you know, rather, um, if there's a proposal here to allow that, again, I could look to perhaps do that here or do that elsewhere in the document as appropriate.
Okay, yeah, I would just prefer to encourage them to do good housekeeping instead of discourage them.
Hmm. Um, okay.
State residential uses only. Then, you know, that tells us it's it's for residential, but if it's red shoreline residential, then the um, marine tidelands take the juris. Take the same classification as the upland portion. So if the upland is shoreline residential, then this would apply. So that's saying residential uses only would be important here.
I think there could be, two things could happen. Um, if the planning commission wanted to specifically this concept here. And again, maybe it's not the most clearly fleshed out, but this concept of having the ability to store, you know, boats and water enjoyment type. You things in a, in a storage shed, if they wanted to limit that to residential uses, you could do that here. If you, on the other hand, wanted to to make an allowance for aquaculture gear, um, you know, on those types of properties, you can do that elsewhere. I think those both things could happen. It would just be in two, you know, two separate sections of the document. So I think, you know, we've we've. Uh, raised another question while trying to answer the one that's here and highlighted.
I agree with Eric, and it, but then also I think that it ought to be in the aquaculture section.
Okay.
And I just thought of another, you know, Eric had asked a question about residential only, what would be a commercial? What, what if, what if you have a city park, county park um, or a private park? And they have kayak rentals and paddleboard rentals and those kinds of things. Um, they would, they're gonna wanna be able to lock that stuff up overnight in someplace. So we need to think about whether we allow that within the buffer or whether it needs to be behind the buffer. In some place for the commercial, so that would be the opposite of residential, the commercial.
But do you, do you think, like, we see it all the time, where we'll see an HOA park that has kayak racks right down by the water or borrow a life jacket rack right down by the water? That's not really commercial, and I guess it's a, uh, you know. It's there for resident, for the residents, but it's not really residential either. But I wouldn't want to discourage kayak racks and life vest racks and that kind of stuff.
Hmm. Yeah, and I think that's a different question than what specifically this would be, like, this is considered to be a actual, you know, permanent structure. Um, and potentially one that um. Oh, hang on a sec. I thought I had another thought there. Um, so, yeah, I think this is for something like a shed versus, you know, an enclosed shed versus something like. You know, a kayak rack or something like that. I'm not sure. That's one of those nebulous things to me that, you know, I'm not sure is, is it considered development? Is it even subject to the master program? You know, that's, that's one of those. That's one of the pieces that I'm still trying to to address in the draft appropriately is sort of that flow chart of any sort of thing you can envision people using in the shoreline. How much of it is actually subject to the act versus how much of it is, um. You know, it's not something we need to worry about. I think, you know, putting a a a four, a four-walled structure in the buffer. Um, that would definitely be considered development uh, and therefore is regulated by this program, and therefore we're, we're putting standards in here for it. Um, you know, yeah. So uh, but I did hear some support for potentially, so the question is, just, you know, if we're talking about a water oriented structure, it's for boats, it's for things like that. By simply deleting this option that's in here, it would accomplish the goal of allowing it for other types of uses. So it would be the single family residential, it would be for, you know, a HOA type residential use. It would be for a park, that would be allowed uh, if you don't limit it to residential uses. So that's certainly within your purview, because again, as written, letter E did not make that limitation. It was just through discussion, you know, with planning commission prior to hearing is where this option was introduced.
It sounds like to me we should drop that option.
All right, is there, um, hold on, let me get your faces on here. I see Doug is thumbs up. Jim, I think you might have.
Yeah, our uses is I'm all for.
Okay, so I will delete that uh, and then um. Uh. Okay, and then I, we are gonna, there is a point, we're gonna talk about aquaculture coming up, but uh, I don't wanna lose the thread. So is there support for, um, well, I guess I can go back and review what, what the code already says about the how gears to be stored in the shoreline environment for aquaculture operation. We can see what it says and then, you know, bring you potential options for um, introducing other language if you wanted to do, to do that. But I heard some support for at least doing that research. Um, is that something folks want me to take a look at? Okay, all right, great.
One, one more thing, Andrew, on, I assume that that limiting it um, twenty-five feet from the ordinary high watermark, that that that, that does exclude a boathouse.
Right.
So boathouses are not, I mean, that. That's handled in other, in another area.
Yeah, I mean, unless you, it's a boathouse in the fact that you are, you know, small boat, you big enough to lift and move, right?
Right.
Um, yeah. Correct. Um, okay, so. I will attempt to broach one more topic, um, but I also want to be mindful of your time and you have additional items on the agenda, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop right there, Andrew, and try to get consensus from the group. Do you wanna continue with the other item? We, it's, it is eight o'clock and we do have a couple of other things. And we can also move these last items to another day if that's what you prefer. So keep going on this or move, move to the next item.
I'm indifferent.
So there are, there's quite a few more of these, so we're, no matter what we do, um, I don't think we're gonna finish them tonight. I was just, it's the the difference of just doing one more versus just calling it.
Have a thought?
Uh, this, yeah, this, this one is the last one. Uh, this, yeah, this, this one is the last one in chapter four hundred, I think.
Correct.
And so I would say call it and we can move into five hundred next time.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to really hustle on our, on our last one notes, on our last agenda. Is that? What I'm hearing? Am I hearing to keep going with Andrew?
No, I would just say and we, we, we finished chapter four hundred, let's. Stop on SMP and move forward with the agenda.
Okay, so. Okay, I, I thought there was another item to four hundred. Okay, so let's stop right there. That seems like a good breaking point.
Yeah, that. My work session. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
So we're gonna move into this planning commission stuff here and uh. So I I'm hoping that you all received what Doug had sent out, Mr. Carmen sent out. And so Doug, could you just give us a little background on that? Those items or thoughts?
I had some phone calls from people who testified. And they wanted to uh. Give me their impression of what they saw from the other side. You know, we all saw it from here. Um, but then their, their experience from actually testifying. And that's what these six points are basically is a result of what they brought up with me. Um, the one, the first one is about all of us being on video. You know, if we're gonna do this on video. Um, we all need to be. Present, you know, it's a public forum and um. You know, they'd like to be testifying in front of the planning commissioners. If we were in person. Like we were three years ago, everybody that would be there would be in person. It wouldn't be someone on a telephone or something else, so. They'd like it to be really a regular public meeting where they can see people and we've got, we've had at least two people who weren't. I mean, I I've never seen Kevin. I don't even know what he looks like. Um, I don't have a bio on him or anything, so what's the public think? So anyway, that's their request is that everybody's um shows themselves. Then uh. They also commented on screen etiquette. And how's that perhaps we, we might need to uh have a little bit of a. A session on that. Some people have laptops where they have the laptop looking up their nose. And uh. It's not too appealing to the people. Um, background noises and fumbling with. Um, the controls and. And being muted sometimes, not being muted other times, and the conversation's going on when they're not muted. And they said that they'd like, you know, if we can continue having, if we're having public hearings, we ought to have. Um, some people in in person at the facility like we did with the SMP. Where we had planning commissioners actually in chamber. Um, that that was a good combination. I like that, too. I'd rather be there. I would have been except I have my hip replaced and I couldn't sit there and. Do it for that long. Uh, they complained about the, our red, yellow and green light. And in in some sense, when we blew it up and made it really big, it it did make an impact, but it. Um, it's stressful to testify. And and those things that cause more stress. Um, should be eliminated and that was one. And if we're using the. The chambers, um, they've got a nice clock on the wall. There's nothing wrong with having a camera on the, on the clock on the wall. They didn't know whether their photo was up or not. Uh, so you know, they're be, they're being viewed, which they weren't. I think they should be. We ought to be able to see the people who are testifying. Um, as long as they're, they have their camera on, but they didn't know whether they were being seen or not. Um, they also had to, to evidently, and I don't know, because I wasn't on that side of the screen, but they said the controls were different than what we normally. Have seen uh for our Zoom meetings, so turning on the microphone and. And whatnot was different, so it took them a while to figure that out, which. Increased their stress level, too. So those are the points that that basically these individuals. A combination of the points that individuals uh expressed to me. And I think there are some things that we can do to change it to make it the, the more uh, I won't necessarily say pleasant. Experience for them, but to reduce the stress and to 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 really show that this is a, was a public hearing. You know, we're all there. Even me with my. You know. Skin, skin stuff.
I absolutely agree, Doug, that we, we do things better. We can always improve. We should be able to. So any thoughts or com- I'm get, I'm gathering this was from the hybrid meeting.
Correct. It was on the SMP where we did the hybrid. Public hearing, so.
And I think for that one, it was sort of a, a bit of a learning curve for us to doing that because we've never been done. So we didn't, nobody really knew for sure what was going on or how to. No, I don't say we didn't know what was going on. We just were learning how to do it. And uh, so. I don't know, but.
I'm not submitting this as a criticism. It's, you know, it's constructive. Comments from the public and if we can stress those and I, I think one of the things which is, are we gonna be on video or not? I, you know, I have a very strong personal opinion that we all should be on video. And and I don't know what the rest of you think. That's why I asked in the, in the note what you think, but um. We all have computers, a camera with my, my, mine, I don't have a. A, a camera on it, so I bought a twenty-four ninety-five cam- camera and microphone from. From Amazon and put it on here when I joined as a, as a planning commissioner because I needed it for the ma- for other things and and. You know, it's not an expensive deal to do. And we ought to have some kind of, they ought to provide a class for some of us who, so we come across this professional on the screen.
Well, I'll say I don't know what Kevin's position is, but I know that Raul. Does not have the internet connectivity where he's at to. Be on video for three hours consistently.
So in his case, it's a cost because he could use video with, with, but he'd be using um data on his phone.
Well, it's not just that, it's. It's not just a cost, it's a connectivity issue. I don't think he's gonna be able, if he's on the phone, he's there for the whole meeting. If he switches to data. He's gonna, I'm gonna guess he's gonna drop out at some point during the meeting, at least once a night.
So Kevin, how, how can we help you to get on the screen?
So for me personally, it's actually a personal preference thing. I, I strongly dislike the use of photography and. Don't use photography in my personal life and. Don't even allow anyone to take photographs of me other than my nieces and nephews. I don't even let my parents take photos. Um, it's just a strong personal preference. Uh. You know, it sounds like maybe Doug has some additional concerns that go above and beyond what the public uh stating because he mentioned things like. I don't even know who Kevin is. I've never even seen his bio. Um, I'm more than happy to give you a quick overview of my resume if you want, um, or maybe you should request that from the. Planning staff when I submitted my application. Um, I'm not sure what the best way is to, to address that side of things.
So let's, let's you and I and Chris get together and we can try to figure, work on that and see where we are and how we can do this. Uh, that is comfortable for everybody. Does that sound like agreeable to all you guys? Yeah. I'm not really seeing any. Okay, it looks like a couple of head shakes. Okay, so let's do that and we'll see what we can figure out. Um. So as far as the screen management, I, I totally get you, Doug, we, there's times when. We just need to look, we, like you said, um. We're, we're a volunteer organization, but we're in, we're also a public entity that needs to look good. Or not look good, but we need to look like we know. Partially know, we're doing it anyway. And and I, and I know I take some of that because I am not a, I'm not a Roberts rules guy, so there's a lot of times when I'm. Kind of fumbling with that. I think that the um hybrid meeting, again, I think that was just a learning session for us. So that brings us to the uh, what are your guys' thought on? And I don't know what we're allowed to do as far as state mandates and those types of things, but what are your? What are your thoughts on? Moving towards that hybrid model and uh. You know, some of those that are willing to meet in person, meet in person and those that aren't, you still do that. I don't even know. Like if, if. Staff is, you know, kinda up for that or willing to do that, so I guess we'd have to figure those things out. So I guess. Go ahead, Eric, I see it.
I, I think the sooner we can move back to in-person meetings. And if, and if we do still leave a component of hybrid to that, I wouldn't be against it, but. The sooner we start having in-person meetings again, the better I'd feel about it. I know that. We've talked before about a lot of the important stuff that happens at planning commission meetings is. Seeing people before and after the meeting as well, and I know even at the uh SMP public hearing. Uh, there was a lot of interactions that happened outside of the formal public hearing parts, too, and and a lot of times people. I, I think one of the things that we, one of the biggest components of the planning commission is that. That we are another conduit for the public to be heard. And I think every opportunity that we give the public to be heard. And uh, we're doing them a service by doing that, and so I wanna hear them all, and if that means that. You know, a, a planning commission meeting's over at eight thirty, but I'm still wandering around the courthouse complex and somebody comes up and wants to give me a piece of their mind. I want them to be able to do that and I wanna hear what they have to say, so I, I, I think there's a ton of value there. And the sooner we get back to actually seeing people face to face, the better off it will be.
And we'd ask, you asked that question, I think, last time, Eric and and. Christina, you were gonna, or staff was gonna look into what the. Current policy was?
Yep, and I did that and um we can move back to. Uh, in-person meetings with hybrid, the state um order is still in place where if. There is an OPM a uh public meeting occurring, then um we do have to provide a hybrid or a virtual component. For the public. Um, so the, that is the. Will in wish of the planning commission, we can um move forward. I would ask the planning commission to give staff some time to set that up. And we start that after the first of the year. I think you. Um, so that I can get, uh, there is only one at this time, only one um meeting room. In our building that is set up for um. The ability to have that virtual component in a in-person situation and that is room two eighty, so I'll have to get that scheduled out. Uh, for the rest of the year.
If you got us up and going by. By this coming, you know, by the, by the. If you got us up and going that quickly, I would be very impressed and grateful.
Well, let's, let's back up a, a step here and let's see. Um, let's have a little raise of hands. Are. Is this a kind of you, are you for this or not? And Kevin, you can signify by saying hi. Are you for this hybrid idea? How about you, Kevin?
I think hybrid is good.
Okay, so, and and I'm gathering, when I hear us talking about that, that would even be for. Commissioners that you could show up or not, or you could be on, on the. On the video. So, okay, so it looks like we have pretty unanimous or we have a unanimous on that, so Christina, I'll. Pass that one on to you. And I'm not sure. Well, the timer, the, the, that's kind of settled with the timer will be in the. In the building, uh, at least after the first of the year sometime, so it kind of sells out. I'm not sure what we. How we address the, if the public is on the screen or not, how do we? Um, do we just tell them that they're not at the beginning or?
So we can work up some. More robust instructions and um. Provide them out at the beginning of public hearings if that, and it all depends on how the um. Zoom webinar is set up, so um again, this was our. First attempt at a Zoom webinar in a public hearing forum, so there were a lot of lessons learned.
And I prefer, I would prefer to see their faces myself.
I know with the Board of County Commissioners meetings, when you testify there, you can see the people.
They had the ability to turn their cameras on and we could see them um. I think we need some more instructions.
So I think that covers that sheet. Let's move to the. So as far as our meeting format idea goes, so we, we talked about that. One was the hybrid or state virtual. And so and. And and also the commission and the decorum of it, we are working right now to. Um, we've been in contact with. So we, we're still looking to refill the positions that have vacated. Uh, we're working with Raul, I, and. And if I'm not mistaken, he's. He's, is he resigning, Chris, or?
Um, staff has received um no contact or no information from Commissioner um daily on.
Okay, and then I believe that. Hold my thinking. So we're replacing, yeah.
Donna.
Thank you. Um, and we're trying to, she's had some. Personal issues going on where she's been able to attend, but she's also have been absent enough where we can make a move. If I'm saying this right, Chris, let me know, that we can probably, she may be replaced, too, so. We're possibly looking for up to three, three uh new commission members. We've. Moved to encourage the Board of County Commissioners to. Get somebody to help us out, so fill the positions. We just, my opinion, we just need to get back to nine and uh. Soon as possible. So. We're kind of there on that.
So by the same token, we also request the county commissioners to fill more planning staff positions.
Well, that, that was, yeah. You, that's pretty good. I'm, I'm, yeah, but you're absolutely right. So.
Difference between volunteers and paid.
So I kind of think that covers the meeting format stuff that, is there anything else I'm missing, Chris?
No, um, getting something in writing from the chair regarding the um. Commissioners positions um. Are the members' positions that have been um absent or um not making meetings, um I will need something in writing. Or confirmation of the, the email that I sent earlier.
Yeah, 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 sorry, that was my. Okay, so we will get that. So any other thoughts on how we can improve ourselves along the way here?
Well, I, I don't wanna seem like a, a dead horse here, but it has been. The better part of a year since we addressed this before, but um. Uh, you know, having a email address that was specific to the planning commission has been something that is either. Well, if that could happen, that would be great.
Can I poke at that for a little bit and ask? For, for. What would the email address be used for the public to submit comments to, for the commissioners to? How would it be used?
The concern prior would be that all of my, my, the email that you have now. Could be subject to a um. could be subject to a, um, records request. And they could have access to my whole email account. Most other jurisdictions, well, at least according to the Department of Enterprise Services, most other jurisdictions provide their planning commissioners with a county email specific to that.
Okay.
That way we don't get our regular email tied up in some kind of public records request.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks for that, Eric. Yeah, that kind of, I dropped it off to the slide for a long time. Anything else?
I would just add to the topic of, uh, of listening to public communication and public input and public testimony. Uh, I, I really applaud Eric and Doug and many others in this group who really put a lot of emphasis and attention on public comment. And I think it is far better than most local government agencies here uh, in terms of the amount of attention that is paid. And I applaud the commission and want us to continue that.
Okay, no, let's move on to staff updates.
So we have no updates for the planning commission tonight.
Okay, no, we're off to calendars. Anybody would be, is there anybody that's going to be unable to attend December 1? How about December 15?
I'm a definite maybe for the 15th.
Going to Vegas again?
No, not this time.
Okay. Okay, Doc, just checking. Okay, so we're good to go. And if everybody shows up on the 15th, if Don's gone, then we'll still have our forum. And we're gonna, I will get with you, Chris, about the, uh, getting some new members here, making that request to the board. If there's nothing else, then we are adjourned. Thanks, guys, for being here. Thank you, staff, for a great job.
Bye, y'all.
See you, guys.
Bye, y'all.